Allow it. We're having some technical difficulties, our server's down. We have one speaker recording and a video. So everybody who wants to speak, speak. The speaker doesn't work, so please speak loudly if you come up to speak. So I'm gonna open the meeting. I call the order of this regular meeting of the City Campbell City Council. It is Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybi.
Present.
Councilmember Furtado.
Here.
Councilmember Scazola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Landry.
Present, thank you. And at this point, I'd like to bind up the Parks and Recreation staff to read the Pledge of Allegiance in recognition of Parks and Rec Month and Natasha? Yeah, I'm prepared, alright. Yeah.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of it for which it stands. Under God, and their physical, but their team, and just.
Will you guys stay there, please? So next on our agenda is special presentations and proclamations. We have a proclamation to declare the month of July as National Parks and Recreation Month in City Campbell. I'd like to recognize the staff in attendance this evening. Your dignity, if I can say your name correctly. Natasha Bissell, Lauren Merriman, Lauren McCaul, Council, Estia Ray, Tina Wong, Erling, Liz Simonovic, Iwathie, Alasuba, Am I even close? I don't think so. And Kayla Nakamoto, I know you guys are all present. Um, I'd like to, whereas the United States House of Representatives has declared July as Park and Recreation Month since 1985. Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the country and including the city of Campbell. Parks and Rec promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance, well-being, alleviating illnesses such as depression, ADHD, and Alzheimer's. Where Parks and Rec encourages physical activity, providing space for popular sports, safe walking, bike trails, swimming, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. Parks and Rec is a leading provider in healthy meals for seniors, our senior nutrition services, and education. Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences throughout youth sports and enhancement activities, teen programs, senior activity centers, senior nutrition, adult fitness, aquatic programming, free community events, and beyond. And that's just the first half of the proclamation, but I will stop there and bring it down. And thank you all very much, let me come down. Do you have a photographer ready?
Yep. You do.
Thank you. So we have a proclamation for the questionable users. Have you had this talking?
I just wanna thank the city council for once again recognizing Park and Recreation Month July. Our national organization does a theme every year, and this year the theme is Where You Come From? And it celebrates the many ways that Parks and Recreation professionals across the country foster a sense of community by providing a welcoming and inclusive program, essential services for all ages and abilities, and state accessible spaces to build meaningful connections. Your ongoing support and dedication to proclaiming July as Parks and Recreation Month is meaningful to hardworking dedicated staff that I have here tonight. Your small mighty and the recreation team and the partnership and funding our parks and keep it up to date. So we appreciate everything to support. Let's be possible.
It's my, it's my personal favorite declaration. You guys have all just fun again, by the way, I like the new features. That's all.
I just appreciate everything awesome you've shared. A great number of activities, great parks that we have, programs that you sponsor, classes and so on. It's a great bit of a good city.
I'll say, I was at an event this past weekend where with some guests from the city of San Jose, and they said, a big crowd, they said, wow, Campbell really knows how to do parks well. We should take some notes. And so I just wanna pass that on. It's, I certainly know that as a resident, but others notice you. But it's because of the hard work of everyone in our department. So it's really appreciated.
And I wanna add on it, I really appreciate the programs and services that staff and the center provides for the health and wellness of our community, which is pretty important these days. And awesome and dedicated staff and hard work. That's kind of mean and mean, and I wanna thank you all for such appreciation.
Yeah, and I just wanna add to the thank yous. I get so many compliments that people say how great our parks are. They love the programs at the community centers. A lot of them don't even live in Campbell, they choose to come to Campbell, they enjoy everything. And I just think it's great that you guys are so dedicated and committed to the city, our whole. Uh, next is communications and petitions, I don't see any. Uh, next on the agenda is open forum. Sorry, I'm sorry. So I have speaker cards here from people that are wishing to speak. Is there anybody who has not turned in a speaker card that wishes to speak? If you could be so kind, you don't have to, but there's speaker cards up there. And we did have a large crowd come two weeks ago to speak on the topic that a lot of these are about Hamas and Gaza and the situation in Israel. I'm just gonna read what I read to them last week. Um, we cannot discuss items that are presented under open forum. You are entitled to speak for two minutes um, and to address us on council on any matters not on the agenda. I already asked if you could so kindly fill out a card. You do not have to provide your name, but if you'd like your name in the official record, provide your name. If you wanna provide contact information, that'd be great. Turn them in over here to Andrea. Um, if you want to have further outreach, provide your contact information, and it would be nice for the council to know if you live in Campbell. Um, we're gonna maintain the forum. We are not going to be clapping or shouting or interrupting between speakers. This is gonna be a calm, collected conversation. Um, if you have not turned in a card at the end, I will ask one last time if anybody wishes to speak on this side. Um, so we're gonna go through the cards in order. And like I said, please be respectful of everybody else's opinion and no clapping or interrupting as they speak. So I'm, I'm kinda shuffled them a little bit. Uh, Inga? And I'm gonna ask some of you guys to queue up. So I'm gonna call next, I will call David, Mossos, John. Wanna line up over here Cheryl? And Samina, you guys wanna start lining up? And go ahead and, hi.
Hi, I'm Inga, I'm a home health nurse and I've been, I don't live in Campbell, but I've been working in Campbell for 22 years as a home health nurse, going from one house to another. You might have seen me around, maybe I even visited your relatives at some point. And I'm here to urge you, the city council, to abstain from introducing any resolution of ceasefire in Israeli or Gaza, as it is not in the city council jurisdiction, and it's not constructive and actually allows division and hostility on our street. My car has been vandalized by now five times because I do have flags, Israeli flags and American flag on my car. I chose to have it, but I do not disrespect anybody. I did not put any offensive messages, but my car have been vandalized. And I parked all over the place, we found here. And I come out of my patients' homes and I see my car vandalized every single time. And police is investigating it, and I was actually informed that it's investigated as a hate crime. So far, of course, they didn't find anybody. But my point is that it's not conducive and it's not helping anybody. And if you are compelled to introduce any resolution at all, demand Hamas to lay down arms, surrender, and free our hostages. So, and Gaza from Hamas, please, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Guys, we are not going to do that, it's gonna take too long, okay? We're gonna follow the form, we're gonna line up and speak, so please do not clap. Thank you.
Thank you for all this.
I don't think that's on. Is it on?
No.
No, I don't think it's working.
Well, not working.
Yeah, it doesn't work. Oh, just, okay, just. Yeah. Okay. You have to speak right here, so speak loudly.
Okay. Maybe you should stand up for you.
Yeah.
Sure.
David?
Yeah, David, who's, uh, ex-city employee. Enjoy my time.
Speak loudly.
I'm a ex-city employee and I've enjoyed working here for, I think this was, was, not something that the city really needs to get involved. Uh, very complicated subject. Not that you can't have complicated subjects, but you have business that has to do with codes and sewers and traffic signals and street lighting, other things that are more important for the city to have things about than about this. They're representing the citizens of Campbell. So many citizens do not agree with this legislation. And how are you to piece out whose for and whose against? Whether or not it's one person, five people, 500 people, 500,000 disagree with your agreement, should really process in that and clean up with that at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John? And I'm gonna queue up Cheryl, Samina, Boyd, and Miriam? If you guys wanna start lining up.
Seema, Seema, not Sabina.
Probably S E M A. Yes, please come forward and line up, okay? And you are John?
Yes. Uh, John Sperry has lived in Campbell for 25 years, and it's a wonderful place to really grow. And the city and the people are good-hearted and make it the best in the world. But I don't think Campbell should have a resolution related to the fighting sister of it all. Uh, wanted to do such a resolution, though I think one that would make sense would be a resolution to have Hamas immediately solve hostages, or kind of just off and then solve inside of the civilian areas. Because that obviously leads to, to blame casualties um, in hospitals and schools and places like that. Shields is, anyway, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi Cheryl.
Hi. Mayor Landry? Excuse me?
Speak up.
Yes ma'am. Mayor Landry, council members, thank you for your time tonight. I'm a proud and involved Campbell resident, and I love and appreciate all that you and your predecessors have done for our community. The Israel Hamas war is not a local issue. Hamas, Israel, and the US government do not adhere to or even notice resolutions passed here in Campbell. There is no reason for the city of Campbell to spend time and resources on this foreign policy subject. All of us who are concerned and who want to have a voice and be upstanders, including you, mayor, and council members, can write to our elected US officials, like senators and congresspeople. That is the proper channel for this foreign policy conversation. The city of Campbell should be continuing to use its time and resources on local issues that directly affects the city of Campbell and its residents. Issues like education, infrastructure, parks, and the safety of local citizens. Should the Campbell government step outside of its purview to take a side in this foreign conflict? There will be no impact in the Middle East. However, taking sides will sow seeds of division in our community. I urge you to work locally to strengthen our community, reduce hate, and unite local citizens. Please stay committed to local issues affecting Campbell and not use local Campbell government time and resources to study, advocate for, or pass this divisive resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Samina? And then next would be Roy after that, and then Miriam? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Seena Cicero, and I've been a resident of Campbell for nine years. I've lived in the Bay Area since 1975. I know I'm the only person here. And I've made it through the Metta Center of South Laoco in 1968. Many 5,000 were killed. I was at Stanford during the end of Vietnam War and saw the devastation on campus. First of all, I wanna second everything that Cheryl probably said, because I agree with her 100%. I think having looked around from here, Sunnyvale, Saratoga, and Campbell, my favorite city is definitely Campbell. You've been there for me for the nine years I've been here, and I like everything I have seen and been part of in Campbell. I am not happy, and I'm very disturbed that this is on the agenda for the city of Campbell. I also believe that we should be thinking about the local business, the locals, community, and not have a divisive community, but one where we are all together, and I don't feel that this is leading to it. And I thank you for your listening to me, and I will ask for your, thank you.
And I'm just gonna say real quickly, we do not have any item on the agenda. We do not have any resolution proposed at this point. So you guys keep talking about a resolution, there is nothing that we have done right now. So just to clarify, so next is Roy.
On October 7th, the Hamas committed divorce crimes against humanity since World War II. The children, including the fat hair old grandkids of my best friends from the woods, they raped and tortured women and ran away to Gaza with 240 hostages, including the one-year-old baby. Then they started using the Vatari tactic, hiding behind civilians, including hospitals, schools, kindergarten, and any place where real soldiers should not be. The Hamas tactic is to make sure civilians die. The more they appear, the savages of the Hamas are, since it puts more pressure on Israel to stop the war without the return of the hostages. Israel is conducting a war, it didn't work, but it is a war for its existence. And it is in parallel in Gaza against the Hamas and the laws of Israel against the Hezbollah. All of them boxes of Iran, and Iran itself has fired missiles on Israel just two months ago. Israel is doing everything possible to avoid uninvolved casualties, way better than any army in history, including the US military operation in Afghanistan. Israel has repeatedly proposed ceasefire in return for all the hostages, and the Hamas keep rejecting the proposal since the world is more and more serious to get killed. It's kind of ridiculous that Hamas supporters were either asking for a ceasefire. This council, and the mayor just said, should not get involved in any political resolution. It is getting voted, the Middle East, the conflict, it is very, very involving. It'll probably take a year of studying to make any intelligent decision. So I'm very encouraged that you said there is no resolution on the table. If the world wants to, no resolution, thank you.
Thank you. And I have Miriam. M A T A N, I think? And then Alicia and Lipton. You are Mary.
Yes. The tragedy is happening in thousands of Israel since the Hamas atrocities on the city are horrifying, all of this. It's incredibly painful. But by now we know that city resolutions about us war, no matter how well intentioned, are followed by hateful anti-Zionist, anti-Semitic rhetoric against the Jews. You'll be pressured to adopt the resolution, which is considerable, but will rightly really fall into. Why consider a resolution about Israel's war with Hamas? And not resolutions, for instance, about the 28 million people starving in Sudan? Or the 500 Christian schoolgirls that have been hit now this year by Islamic, obviously, Jew? For the persecution of our Inga Muslims, we admire. Why have you been silent about the civil war in Syria with over 280,000 Israeli deaths? It's fortunate when you're twice a person. Why is the only Jewish thing in the world so targeted? City councils, to be honest, to convince. All these international tragedies are horrific, but they are not the typical. All are the leaders of other city councils, and want to no longer consider resolutions providing with threats. Or, in theory, can consider all of it. There was a ceasefire resolution in Sunday today, it's been there for weeks. They're the ones refusing to accept it. Hamas, as you know, is backfiring on its chance left to America. Take them at their birth. Keep shy, this Campbell is too long. Please focus your attention, lose your extinction. Please present anti-Semitic, Islamic citizens in the city. Let me feel safe in Campbell now, it's like a. Was this America?
And M A T A N or A R?
Ta.
Ta. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for coming back. I'm Tom. You're county resident, this is here in downtown Campbell. You know, from a truly practical perspective, I would really hate to see this council spend its time dealing with international topics. I would rather see you come up with great projects. With all the advice of the residents, make this downtown area the most spectacular running south bay. That's what I'd like you to put us on. It is to save the business topics, they're bad for business, they're, they're cut from the tapestry of people. We'd like to see you avoid this. From a moral perspective, I'd be devastated to see an elected city council in the United States both on a ceasefire. Eight Americans are still held to our organization. This coming Thursday, we all gonna be, you know, celebrating, right in the state. Partaking with our families, those eight Americans are, will be lucky to have them. It's just, I'm factoring with me how the city council in the United States would consider such thing. There's, there's a deal on the table presented by a president, gives a deal, that deal was accepted by the United Nations, was accepted by Israel. The only one who justified it is Hamas. Honestly, we're doing everything we can, that's what I feel. I don't think we should be surrendering, and brothers and sisters are there, so don't forget them. Let's have them back home, they're next, they're the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much. D L I S A T A? I don't know how to pronounce it, I'm sorry.
Hey, you're in Good Call. Um, I need to tell you, shut up, I'm sorry.
Speak up for me.
I really am doing the best I can, it's the volume that I was gifted with, thank you. Um, I'm here to echo what so many have said, or, um, I, uh, I'm raised in city of County out of a stone's throw from the spirit building. I love shopping, dining, volunteering, fundraising, protesting, and registering voters, here is you. Um, I'm also here as an Iranian too. And I'm not asking you to make any sort of statement about the French pain or all of the tragedies that are being brought upon you. In the West. Um, I'm just here to share what my perspective is on this request that's been set forth to you to consider either a ceasefire resolution or a study session. Um, like others have said, we're eligible for the ceasefire resolution. That represents just the loudest few, no doubt, risk of invasiveness, and distracting from your primary job, which is to represent policies to the people of Campbell and to work on bettering the lives of our business and to, to the city. Now to your study session proposition, which sounds innocent enough. Um, as the speaker before said, spend a year studying every stern issue in depth, and maybe even then not, or to leave study session. Um, if that is the force that you decide to go, I really urge you to ignore the shell of that. Um, ignore weaponized compassion. Um, I don't think there's a person in this room that would love to see the war over tomorrow after Hamas based on its weapons and returns our hostages. So in closing, I urge you to focus on issues at hand, the issues of war neighbors, not the issues of a country thousands of miles away that have any effect on um, and to clear your docket to of these types of distractions and work on being prepared.
Thank you. And, um, L Y K D Diane? And is there any other speaker parts?
Um, good evening. My name is Lypin Co. I'm not Palestinian, I'm not Israeli, I'm not Muslim, I'm not Jew, I'm your neighbor next door, I live in Santa Clara. I'm here today to convey that we strongly oppose to our local city councils taking up and issuing resolutions on geopolitical issues, because that is not your job. I urge you to spend 100% of your time and attention on issues directly related to our local city, not geopolitical issues. Members of the community who are concerned with geopolitical issues should take it up to the United States, to their United States Congress representatives, not at the city council. I know that you do not have any geopolitical issues on the agenda at this point, and and not just Gaza, but any other geopolitical issues, and I'm thankful for that. Please keep it up.
Jenny?
Hi, I'm here because I heard that the city council is being asked to, there are, to talk about. And she passed a resolution, there's like, so, and pretty much every issue happened at so many. So, so it's on. Probably, every. To potentially, to, 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 chosen. Sweet. Not to bring to two opposing sides and to try to fight a hero. To, please don't figure out.
Abby? Is there an Abby? And is there any other speakers that wish to speak? Is it me? Okay, Melinda? Just come forward. Yes, I am. Can you speak up a little?
Oh, um, the speakers aren't working, you know, you have a technical problem, so we need you to speak up. That doesn't work, just, just speak loud.
Yes, I, I apologize, I was late, I came back. And I'm here because I escaped an Islamic mob in my country in Asia. And I thought I can confess, now I'm having, being in a free country so much for protection of public, but on the 7th of October, it brought back a lot of the bad memories. And I think as city councils, you are not to address international um, issues. Israel has their own right to defend themselves against the attack from terrorists. What happened was really recent and as a lawful US citizen, uphold the freedom of this country. I resent those who, at the same time chanting death to USA, burning our flags and then dictating our councils of what their agenda is. They don't want anything happen to them, don't start a war, don't start attacking innocents. There is no country called Palestine, look in the history, there is never, ever a country called Palestine. I still have twenty-one minutes, so what's the national anthem? When's their independence day? Look it up.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak under open forum on this topic or any others? I don't see any, I'm going to go ahead and close the public meeting, and then if there's any council members that would like comment? And, Olivia?
Yeah, sure. I'm what you might call a free speech absolute, so I really appreciate you guys coming out and having your voice heard at your local government level, I think, which is very much yours. Um, and I, sorry. Oh, and I will say, I think I can speak for everyone up here, that we are certainly prioritizing things at the local level, we're always singing about Campbell first, always, forever, so just wanted to
Thank you.
I, I, I guess I have to project, yeah, we don't have the microphones. I just want to thank everyone who came out to speak for being respectful, open-minded, um, coming to, as Elliot said, all of us believe in free speech and you having the right to come and speak to your representatives. I urge you to keep in touch and just appreciate you making your voices heard, doing so in a manner that, that's respectful and reflects the values of our community.
Just, I want to thank everyone for coming, seeing you.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate, I do appreciate everybody coming, I feel like we've given you ample time to come and speak for us. And I do appreciate you sharing your thoughts about what your perspective is. That was definitely a different perspective than last two weeks, so it's good to hear different sides of the situation, so thank you all very much for coming. Uh, open forum is closed, you're more than welcome to stay for our rest of our exciting meeting, so feel free, but if you give the moment to clear the room, I will give us a couple minutes. If you're any question, we will see. Oh, yeah, we wish you had our AC mode.
Us too.
Us?
Yeah.
If you're going to speak and talk, please go outside. You guys, please go outside. All right, thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is council announcements. Uh, city offices will city offices will be closed for business this Thursday, July fourth, in observance of Independence Day. Police and emergency services will remain open. The city clerk is accepting applications for the planning and civic improvement commission and the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. To find out more, please contact the city clerk's office at four oh eight eight six six two one one seven, or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. Deadline to apply is Friday, August second. The city is focused on the needs of its community members and the development of our climate action plans. We want to hear about your concerns regarding the climate and your thoughts on what we can do to help by participating in a short ten-minute survey. The survey can be found at campbellca.gov forward slash climate survey, and is available through the end of July. Recreation swim is available to help cool off during the heatwave. Open to all ages, Tuesday through Friday, one thirty to three thirty, and Saturday, two PM to four thirty PM. Space is limited, advanced online registration and payment is required. For more information, visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. July is Parks and Recreation Month. Help us celebrate by attending one of the many events to subal great all the wonderful services we offer. Upcoming free events include the plein air, bring your easel and paint and join us in front of the Heritage Theater, the painter version of the building on July ninth from nine AM to eleven. Yule night, come watch Wonka Under the Stars at J V Morgan Park in the baseball field on Friday, July twelfth from eight PM to eleven PM, and that's on the Rincon side. Free day at the Easy House, explore the Easy House for free on Saturday, July thirteenth from eleven AM. Campbell Adult Center offers a range of supportive services for older adults and their families, such as case management, health insurance, advocacy, free legal services, caregiving consultation, and technology tutoring. Services are free of charge and not, do not require adult center membership. For more information or to schedule appointment, contact the adult center at four oh eight eight six six two one four six. Access our library twenty-four seven, get a library card, it's easy and free. With a library card, you will get free access to resources and services, borrow books, music, movies, conduct research, get homework out, and gain three attendance to state parks, fairytale museums, and galleries. To apply, visit s c c l d dot org. Two one one is a free confidential service that connects you to an expert caring for help in your area, whether you need housing, mental health, or other resources, call two one one or find the local two one one here. That's the end of America now. Next on the agenda is the consent count. All matters under this are considered one motion unless an item is pulled. Is there any members from the audience that would like to pull an item? Any member on council?
I don't want to pull an item, I just want to call attention to item eight, and to see amended JPA to Silicon Valley Animal Control. Just to see, it's a petition of Los Gatos to JPA, so I'll be a five-member JPA, and best part of that is that it will achieve a twenty-two percent cost savings content as a result of down so for Sabaka from the city of Los Gatos.
I'm ready. I'm free, I'm going to yeah. Okay, so I'm going to entertain a motion for items two, four through eight. Also move.
Second.
Do you have a motion in the second, roll call, please?
I'm doing, sorry, council, councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado. Councilmember Scazola.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lopez, Mayor Landry.
Hi, the motion passes. Okay, so now to item number three, which is the meeting minutes from June eighteen.
Sure. Yeah, and I was going to just speak for him because he spoke to me about this, and just to explain for the record, he had a question on the minutes for item twelve, called item three, uh, which was the item station, item F, and stated councilmember Scazola by how he expressed his support for the compensation increase. Uh, councilmember Scazola is requesting the city clerk act for the minutes, summary of supporting on if there was a so spoken city clerk. So we will go ahead.
So I also wanted to let you guys know personally, I met with a one gentleman has put in paperwork showing interest in running for council, he tells me specifically
We're discussing the meeting minutes.
Right, this is
And now you're bringing up another person.
Oh, this is, this applies to, I, I'm trying to tell you that my argument that is not that I'm trying to get all of our arguments that were, because it was four to one, four of us in support of the pay raise. I'm, I'm letting you guys know, I will personally interact with that, that goes to my argument, this gentleman told me, very appreciative that, that we voted for him using the pay because he said, I don't know if I push him over, so just want to let you
Okay, so the, what you're trying to clarify in here is adding language of the conversation.
Just, just as there was comments, uh, specifically on the sending vote, but not on the support. And it was a discussion, some courts captured out of somewhere.
For being fair.
Yes.
Did I add to that? Yeah. I, I have a bit of a problem with that. Um, historically, we have action minutes, and it's really to record action of the council with second. And we go explore and against, usually the discussion is not when councilmembers dissent, they do side or reason for it to but the rest of the comments are not counter to action. So I, I respectfully agree, adding additional language to the
Can we read, uh, that item, what it was recorded in? Because I, I just feel like it, why I'm bringing this up is it felt like that the four of us didn't, like it just said, oh, we supported it, but there was no hard you know, we don't
Okay, um, let me state my part, and then we can talk a little further. So, under oral request, right now, it states, the following individual spoke in support of a ceasefire in Gaza resolution when the study session obtained more information that listed the nineteen twenty people that spoke. I wanted to know, we just wanted to acknowledge that there was a large presence in the don't say anything. So I just hope you can add one sentence to acknowledge whatever, if I have support.
Well, again, I feel that, um, you have a large presence, and those individuals in the audience have an opportunity to speak, and we shouldn't be counting heads and saying we had two to three thirty spoke. I, I just feel like the rest of the who spoke, and, and I don't think that we should be counting
Okay. Okay, now back to what Elliot wants to add.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up on my phone, but going off of memory, it just, it felt like, uh, uh, it just seemed like, you know, there was a little more details to Sergio's hence it unless I'm crazy, but I felt like it just to me.
So can I speak to it? Yeah, so, um, I did, I did, um, include Sergio's comments on, um, not supporting the compensation because it was adverse to the recommended action. Um, I believe I did say I listed out the remaining four council members that, and said they were in support of the council compensations. I did not include your reasons on why.
My, my main concern is just that if somebody, that is official record, and if somebody reads that, some citizen reads that, they might make their own assumptions that why did we support it, the four of us, you know, one council member is against it, you know, and it stated a little the reasoning behind why not to support it, sure. But then the four of us supporting it, that leaves assumptions for for, unless they watched the video, but not ever does that, so that's just my concern, and I just would like a little bit of, you know, our brief comments on the affirmative, since there was, usually where, you know, we usually vote unanimously up here, so this is one of those few times and I just feel that for the public record, you should know, like I was just trying to state, like I got confirmation personally, oh, my argument really valid, I want people to know that it's not for us, the pay raise is not for us. It's for people, my argument was that to motivate people to want to run, that's, that was my, I think that's important.
Yeah. It's a motion really important.
Yeah, either as amended or as stands was
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on the casting of the meeting minutes for June eighteen.
So 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 in other words, you wouldn't object?
No, I said I will entertain a motion for the meeting minutes on June eighteen, someone needs to make a
I'll draw my motion.
Second. It wasn't a motion, okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June eighteen?
Either amended or as is.
I would, yeah, I would make that, sorry, I was I would, I would love to make an emotion to amend the meeting minutes so that they'd be more reflective on that one issue of what the, the people on the support side, the four of us that were in support of.
We have a second on the motion. She means not supported by a second, or entertain another motion, or someone
I'm moving adoption since item number seven. Oh, we're going on number three, sorry.
It's this remote voting on the minute.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
So we have a motion regarding approval of the regular meeting minutes as they stand, we have a second.
I'll say
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado. Councilmember Scazola. Vice Mayor Lopez, Mayor Landry.
Hi, the motion passes, thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is the public hearing and introduction of ordinances. The number nine is placing the cost of abating hazardous vegetation on property tax assessment rolls. And we have a presenter, the community development director, Rob Eastwood.
Thank you.
Be loud.
I will try, thank you. Apologies, I took off my jacket to avoid it. Uh, the council member is a three-part process, in the September of last year, he declared weeds a nuisance. In January of last year, uh, the county weed debate program, which are identified properties put on the list, it was not coming to live on the list. Still over the council, we removed on the list. We had some speakers at that hearing. That hearing in January actually did remove on project on the list. This is the third part of the process, so following that, county weed that's gone out and executed the weed safety process. This simply allows Campbell and county to put cost of the program of abating weeds on the tax rates. So that's what's for you tonight, again, it's the third part of the process. Uh, I do want to let the council know, uh, working concerns, we heard from the community members and the council on some of the programs itself. Especially on due process, making sure people had the opportunity for this to address weeds, if any of the council have worked with the program manager on this due process improvements. Specifically allow someone who's going to identify the things to obey the weeds themselves first, uh, without having the county out to go separate and execute it. With that, I have nothing more to add, and I may have to answer any of these questions.
Does council have any questions? No questions, has anybody from the public wish to talk on this item? See, I'm sweating on my seat here, I got to stand up for a bit, sorry. Uh, I'll close the public hearing, and, um, is there a return back to council for any discussion or motion?
Just wanted to clarify to the public record, so going forward, then, when a property in the city is identified as the property owner is notified and the property owner has the option of clearing the weeds himself or herself, um, by a certain deadline. And then if that doesn't happen, the city, uh, will go ahead and property owner will be charged for that. There had also been a question as to what happens in subsequent years, because the policy previously, they called for the fact that once someone was on the list, they stayed on the list, even if they cleared the weeds. My understanding now is that the new policy indicates that once the weeds are cleared, no longer, uh, automatically need to remain on the list any longer, uh, as long as they go by the city that they know the weeds are so it's not automatic, you know, staying on the list, that was my understanding.
Uh, one small matter to add, councilor Furtado, I was going to verify, I see true. Uh, and so once you're on the list, I'd say every year, a property owner has the opportunity to come to the city council provide evidence that they should not be on the list. So no instance, or you phone the So no instance, or you're on the list and you don't have due process to be.
So the current process would be improvements that she mentioned. When we find a property that is not on the list to be non-compliant during the fire season. We will send them a notice, the property is now being non-compliant. We will give them a specific number of days to rectify that. We'll go back and inspect the property again. If it is cleared, they will not be added to the list. However, if it has not been cleared, they will be added to the list. And they'll be subject to fees the next year, because you can't charge fees until they've been through this process. Anyone that makes it onto the list completely will remain on the list. Or until they have demonstrated three consecutive years of voluntary compliance. Or shown us, the county, that they have built in landscapes sufficient to remove the threat of a fire hazard on the property. It's always addressed. So. After the weeds are cleared, either by the property owner or by the county's charge. Then. Their, their property remains on the list. But they can come before the city council and ask. And advise us that the property has been cleared and asked to be. Yes, please the council do that. Yes. So it's not an automatic staying on this for three years, no matter what. Just want to make sure that, that's my understanding, and I want to get it on the public record so it's clear. For the program. We will remove them because of three years of voluntary compliance. Because of building last year, or because instructed to do so by the elected body.
But if you, if I clear your weeds. Beginning is what actually puts you on the list. If you clear your weeds, they do not get put on.
Yes, previous to this year, if I was inspecting. Property A and saw property B being non-compliant, I would send them a letter and they'd be on the next grid list. After discussions with city staff. We've changed that so that we'll send them a letter and we'll look again, and if they've corrected it, we won't put them on. So that this is that warning that everybody said they want to get, now they get.
Any further discussion? Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move the staff recommendation. Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we'll call please.
Councilmember ViB. Councilmember Fertato. Councilmember Schizola, Vice Mayor Lopez. Mayor Landry.
Okay, next is unfinished business, and this is the discussion to consider options for utilizing. The city's remaining American Rescue Act funds, the ARPA. And Brian Leventhal and our director, Will Fuentes, are.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is an ongoing discussion, as you're aware. For purposes of the public, when we talk about ARPA funding, there's obviously a history here. And background, staff report, the record, well, it gives you quite the detail, but. The city received approximately ten million dollars of ARPA. That we received is approximately five million dollars statements. As the council knows, and according to the ARPA guidelines, the city must obligate and appropriate number. Those funds by December thirty first of two thousand twenty-four and spend them fully by December thirty first. In the past fiscal years, we used the funding in various ways, the council's. There is a summary of all the ARPA funding. In the attachment, it's including the staff report attachment, and any other copy there. The total of all of those totals are today. But the purpose for tonight is to get some direction from the council on how you want to go about. Expending, allocating the remainder of the ARPA funds. Last we talked to you, it was about one point four million dollars in discretionary. Since that time, we've calculated the interest on that money, and it's really one. Approximately eighty-two million in discretionary ARPA funds. Tonight, we're not asking you to take foreaction, we were asking for direction. We would bring back based on that direction. There is too many permutations tonight to fully flush out all of them. But based on your directions, we can come back to you. In the staff report, we've highlighted several different ideas and topics with various amounts of. At the council's discretion. There is a couple in there that's listed, has some bold language in it. Like a highlight, because it's staff's not recommending implementation on it. And I wanted to discuss those, I just to explain those recommendations. And then certainly, the others have either been commented on by council members or discussed previously. But I want to start with. The few that we're not recommending for, just explain the thought process. With the buy down of the BMR units, we had approximately thirty-five thousand dollars targeted for that potential program. But there is a steep cost of this, because each buy down, each year of those BMR units. So if the council were to make this expenditure now, we'd buy down some of the funds. We get really one year. The following year, if you don't buy them down again, we go back. So, didn't feel that was really strategic use of that. Would love to support it, but I, I don't know that that's the best use I have from the staff. The other one that was not recommended was what was listed originally as a discussion on universal. And that was slated at five hundred thousand. I know. At our last discussion, we broadened that beyond discussion of. The basic income and that principle is complicated. While there are some models to work out, there wasn't a program readily available. Sort of latch on to and take advantage of. At the last step that we had with the council on, council's involved in maybe some other. County programs that we could leverage, or other organizations, not necessarily uniform basically. Perhaps other things that would be beneficial. And, and we just didn't have the time between that discussion, we just to flush those discussions out. There is probably social programs and other programs. With regard specifically to uniform basic. For the same reason, with the BMR buy downs and our expense, you're not getting really on going. So, those are the reasons we made the negative recommendations on those, certainly. In direction of the council. With the others, I want to circle back to those and just highlight those just quickly. The first one was the Campbell PDA enhancements, this includes Civic Center Drive and Second and Third Street. And that was projected at six hundred and five thousand. Council previously spoke on this item as well as an item, the next item, which is city facility replacement project. At three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The last discussion the council had seemed there was a consensus of the council to support those projects. But the direction was to leave them unfunded right now till we got to those broader discussions, understand that broad range of money, the one forty-two. How it's going to, so we're doing that this evening. I can certainly answer questions on those. In addition, we heard from the council, our last discussion, that. Should either preserve or slightly enhance the funding for the parkland program to allow perhaps up to two more businesses. Opt into the parklets, so staff is directing. Total allocation of fifty to ninety-five thousand. Funding support, probably two more businesses, and also helpful. Would have to. To customize those parklets. We had previously, the city had previously taken on that customization with a contract. The one thing that I would mention about the parkland programs. Previously, we'd given them to the end of October. To decide or not to keep the parklet. We want to circle back to the council. Put on any remaining funds in the parkland program. You'll want to leverage that, either get some directions tonight from the council, spend that. Back to you in October, update you on the parkland program. Before December, sure. Not just make it a sign of reality, actually. And then the next couple items were ones that we had on here previously, certainly. The pit council comments and section. Hotel voucher program for the unhoused, at two hundred and twenty-five thousand, hotel stays for the unhoused. People in the weather use the muskettus model by purchasing hotel rooms and券 vouchers at thirty-five thousand. And then the last one, I'm sorry, two more that made. Positive recommendations, based on council's discussion last time, we added fifteen thousand dollars to. Providing support for downtown businesses, the CBA, meeting events, in particular events. That they've taken on. And the holiday, Herald Lights. Holiday season. And so we've allocated fifteen thousand, we certainly gave council comments on that about. That purpose as well. And then last, sorry, two more. Two more, the West Valley Homeless Shelter. The hundred thousand dollars, as the council is aware, we've received a grant for a destination home to hire an house coordinator. We are in that process, we have actually conducted. However. There hasn't really been any work in the West Valley area on what a shelter. Cupertino, Saratoga. Were all very interested when they got out the, after the. And, and part of that work, I think, transcends our boundaries with other West Valley cities. But we feel strongly that studying for a shelter location. Won't get off the ground without some support and something seems to. So that is our suggestion, and it would be something on. And then last but not least, is support for the Silicon Valley Safe Park Program. And there is some additional financial needs. Safe Park Programs are operated by our faith-based organizations. And where they really need help is for those using their services, both carbon fares. And we estimated that. So, all of these numbers are subject to discretion and. You're pushing and pulling, with all things being recommended by staff. You would have about. One point four nine million allocated out of the one point eight two. The remaining three hundred and thirty-five. So, we still want to spend that three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, interested in council's perspective on. On more of those. Clearly, with regard to parklets, we'll be reporting back to you in October. Unless you want to give us some direction this evening, where those surplus funds should go, either in these areas or.
So I asked to have them provide a summary list for me, and I have eleven items. Two are not recommended for staff, there's eleven bullet points here, the total of. So we can either go down the list line and say I support and tell me which ones you support, or we have some questions to Brian. Ask Brian questions first, and then we can discuss what we support. So, on package change one nineteen. There are two items on there, one under operational, where we spent thirty-one thousand dollars for boiler and HBA city replacement. And then under the capital projects, we spent a hundred and thirty-one thousand, City Hall, HBA's chiller replacement. Given the condition of this chamber tonight. Project applied to this chamber, I mean, I'm kind of being sarcastic, but this is not the first time we've sweated to death here. Tonight's the worst, we've had people leave because it was so hot in here. Did that, did that project apply to this City Hall? And did we get our monies worth?
I, I, I see Ron here, and I'm not going to put him on the hot seat on this, but clearly those projects did happen. It's clearly not working. And so there's some work to do.
There was work done on chambers, HBS.
On the, on the main.
But not specifically.
Not specifically the chambers, it is always.
And I mean, it's not, this isn't the first time it's been bothering here, I'm at the stand, so to me, we should be. Using some of our upper funds to fix this. That's a priority. That was my question.
It's hard to disagree with you in this temperature.
Any questions?
City, I want to put him in the hot seat. I, I have a question about the. The parklets and. I want to, I want to make sure I'm asking in a way that's clear. So you, I, I, I understand. That any contracts for not just this program, but generally, they need to be executed by December thirty first. Twenty twenty-four. My question is, because this program would be voluntary, and it's, it's being proposed. Forty thousand would fund, one parkland, parkland eighty thousand would fund two of them. Let's hypothetically, if. Whether it's eighty thousand and we only have one business that uses it, or it's forty thousand or eighty thousand. And we have no businesses that make use of those funds. Those funds would, would obviously go unused. My question is. Not the December thirty-first day, but what would be the date by which we would be able to get that information, see, oh, there actually is. Is not any interest in this, still be able to use those funds that we're not losing almost a hundred thousand dollars of. When, which, when we're talking about projects that are in the five to six stages, that same significance to me. And so I just want to make sure we're not necessarily. Using fun, or, or. You know, because I can support this program, I just don't want to see it go to waste if it's not.
Well, so, no, your point's well taken. What we would anticipate is coming back to. Then if we move quickly on another capital project, something support operations or. We can either get your direction tonight, if there is a surplus and that money isn't spent, there's actual money, this is what we make to allocate. But we can, we can come back and report to you where it is within the surpluses on this, or any of the others.
Okay, that, that, that's very helpful. Because this is questions, I'll hold off, but thank you.
So, we're just asking questions.
Right now, we're asking questions, then we're going to get down to.
Yes. Curious about the program operating safe parking. Is it full at this moment? Are there fifteen cars there? Is it an existing program?
Or from work, uh Robbie's or.
There are council members, well, at least a creed on record. Two six, very good. Possibly a safe question. Uh just um. Is this an existing program already and are there the team cars already?
Yes, in the first, yes, been in operation for quite some years, uh my impression. Three religious, three to four religion institutions in Campbell, escape and some and some cities. Uh I think they do operate at Pasadena.
Okay, and um is this simply several uh religious institutions, is this, they kind of spread them out to the various churches in the might have, or is it all?
No, they spread, yeah, so it's uh I think another term is rotating safe program, so they go on a monthly. First. Religious institution takes one month. They operate it for that month and then rotates the next.
So all fifteen will boom, they they move along like a caravan.
Yes, that's an illustrative way to think about it, I'm not sure exactly, some folks might come into the program, so. Looks like completed housing or other services, I'd say that's consistent, but.
Okay, great, uh and um I was also curious about the uh repairs uh like. Are are these like, I'm assuming basic repairs that if they see, oh, your vehicle's about. Just game over, we don't. That or the other. Just trying to keep.
Good, good question, my impression, so I've been asking them for here, hey, how's the door? Yeah, help you, support you. Generally very self-reliant, so. Your push. I can say, well, you know, we don't have the expertise to do a lot of repairs. There are all types, sometimes there's a far as, you know, transitions going out, sometimes it's just me. It's a rough estimate on. Lost behind it five hundred dollars. Perhaps two a month for a year. These different types, again, these are folks. You think of um safe parking programs are different types, uh these are most, these are typically the RVs. Talking about operators, folks are coming unhoused, they're often getting their car for the first time, a lot of them are working. They're in the cars uh.
There are safe park programs. But frankly, they're not being used very much. Uh in fact, one of the churches on the grid, so. Thing is, my understanding is that many that actually safe park are not fully. Are are destitute. In fact, these are. Have jobs, but they live so far away that they drive here once a week and they park their vehicle somewhere. Uh and they stay here for the week and then they go back home. So the safe park was convenient because then they would park in the church parking bus. And the churches oftentimes then provided access to restrooms and sometimes church volunteers prepared meals, just receiving so on. So could sure quite frankly. But just to. Only would have to go through a process, determining. Of what their needs are, whether we should support them or not, and it's extremely. So I just have some concerns and. Uh I was thinking back to. Or the safe park programs and asking if they're still operating. Uh I'm speaking about knowledge of one program.
No question, um.
Well, it's remains, well, it's been brought up here, so for whatever.
And I, Dan and I. On this first came forward. Thomas, because they didn't have a hand wash station. And it was that we were setting the parameters of the permit and the churches ran the program. So we have not had any day-to-day questions, we have not had day-to-day interaction. Regarding who they allow and what they, I just knew fifteen cars rotate church to church. Make sure we have a hand wash station.
Yeah, the city does not manage, operate, oversee, regulate, program, doing standard is we allow. Cars to.
And we do not make any financial contribution. Okay, so I don't know how we want to do this, if you want me to read off one item and ask who supports it, if you have specific ones you want to talk about.
Maybe, maybe you read them one at a time, I'll see who supports it.
I'm going to go down the list, um I'm starting to bother. Safe park, Silicon Valley Safe Park Program, fifteen thousand dollars.
Really, by this standard, I'm not sure that I'm certain to support that right now, she seemed to me, um and you know, the churches. You handle this, they haven't explained to us that they need money. Like you do this, it's part of their. So. Can we need work and I see how. By us in a period.
Yes, I I definitely hear Dan's point, uh but one thing I would say is I'm very interested, being that this is for. Seems like car maintenance and repairs, um that perhaps just knowing. How messed up that person's car, you know, they have truly like something that's really wrong. I mean, if someone comes from out of town, they don't. I understand what you said, but you know, I don't know, like, I know, it's not like we can interview them all, it's up to churches, it seems, but. But I, you know, I do know, I guess my comments would be that I do know how devastating it is for people who are best suit or close to best best suit or even just struggling. Working class people, if they have a car. Uh maintenance issue, they just don't have enough dollars to to get it done, their car officially breaks down, one small problem, almost like our own health. One small problem that goes untreated becomes a big problem, now their car is fully broken down where they could have had a minor maintenance. And so my only comment about this is I do understand that why they migrate, but this is particular. For harming to not the overall program, but that that makes sense to me, but I I agree with you that. Obviously, you want to be getting it to the the people who truly need it, and that is, again, you bring up a great point, I had.
Do you support this or no?
I'm on the fence, I want to hear what you guys.
I'll be sure, I supported, um the staff report notes that this is coming out of discussions. With the providers, um and and so I'm 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 not sure where. Thought is coming from that that we haven't consulted them, it sounds like staff has done done a lot of work in in doing that. It's not a program that we're administering here, it would be a contract with with the existing providers. That seems straightforward to administer, and so I'm I'm just. I I I think there are hypotheticals that have brought up that that could be concerns, but just based off the work that staff. Has has done, I'm okay for, after we discussed, it sounds like you have. An impact on a population that is highly impacted by. By what I see as as the intent of the ARPA.
Um I generally support it, but I have one concern about the funds. Or be. Utilized and whether or not the. Recipients must provide evidence that they actually use those funds for a car repair or for. Services. Um I I see the potential for. But. But I I guess it would be up to the operators to determine how money would. That that's my one concern about. Support generally.
Hey, I do support it, and I would say I want some clarification on the program, is the church getting the money and then the church managing it? I would want some limitations like Dan just said of that, but. Definitely goes to your car, it's not going to go by drugs with, so I support the money. But implementing the program, you guys are going to come back with responses to this, so we have three right now that.
I'll also.
Okay, so Brian.
All these concerns.
You're tracking all this, right, Brian?
I I would say if there was data, I would.
Right, so the the we're trying to come up with a list and staff will come back and say, yes, here's all the projects now make the motion, so. Right now, we're saying strong support, we got at least four. Come back, but then bring back to us what that means, it's like, is the church managing the money or we engaged with all, how are you treating, how are you? Next, I have the West Valley Homeless Shelter feasibility study. Want to start then?
Sure, I I support this, I think, um I know that it's somewhat speculative. Concept, but. We need to start somewhere, and to me, this gets the ball rolling somewhat, and it partner in our West Valley cities. Also have needs and I I just think it's a discussion that's worth. For for future and on our address.
You know, um I I just want to thank staff for their initiative in bringing this idea to us, which was not one that. Oh, but it's it's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm strongly supporting this one, I, yeah, I just like what you guys did, oh, did oh. This, we didn't think of this, and when I saw it, I was like, this is brilliant, since this is such a good idea. And like Zari said, get this ball rolling. Uh we all have shared borders with each other in the West Valley here, it's going to benefit all of us. And we we're going to be the heroes here, so we we still have funds to spend unlike a lot of other cities, and if we. Spend on this particular thing, it benefits not just us, but. We at large, and I I absolutely love this and I'm one hundred percent.
Yeah, I'm in a hundred percent support and the feasibility study is exactly what it says, is it possible? Don't start somewhere, we don't know if it's possible, so this is our way saying we are going to find out if this is possible. To be a leader in this um emotion. Okay, and the next one is association of CBA, uh they keep coming to us asking for subsidies for events and. This would uh give them fifteen thousand dollars to.
Yep, strongly supported this as well, uh so glad you hadn't brought this up, it's. It's a great idea and everyone wants our downtown events, I think we're all in support of our downtown. And this will uh this will definitely. Correct, this is going to be a nice little little boost, I would say.
Does the money have to be spent to work, does the money have to be spent by a certain deadline?
The money have to be allocated by December, but then it has to be spent by twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we'll contract with them for specific uh tasks, still working. For more couple of years by the. So so spread that over more than.
So in other words, they have to spend by eight, they will.
By December thirty-first, two thousand.
Yes, so that's really only. Just like two years of support.
I I support it, however, one of one of. That my understanding is they haven't agreed to this. And and it it may be. It may seem unusual that we would be asking to contract with them. We understand it's because of ARPA, but I mean, we had all those discussions. I I I would support my my question, just, you know, keeping with my question on a different topic. If they don't want this for some reason, then I would just request that we find that out as soon as possible, so we can use the funds for some other purpose. Otherwise, I I support it, it's just that we can't force them to enter.
I I support it, I I'm not sure that the fifteen thousand is. Exact amount. I my thought process was that. As I mentioned, it's fascinating, they support these, the city with um Carol lights and the. Color, and they do have expenses associated, especially with the Carol lights, they. Um hire the party rides and the platform machines, bounce houses, and I know they're on a fixed um budgets, so. Uh a one-time. Assistance to them to buy the. But I would leave it up to the CBA to to come forward with, this is what they're expecting, this is our expenses, this is how much it costs and and not just.
I would feel that, uh one, find out if they really want the money, two, what are the restrictions on them of the money? Like if they hire someone who they have to pay for very. So when you come back, and I don't know if fifteen thousand is enough. Uh so that I would ask what is that a range of number that they would.
I I I just want to make sure for staff that this is clear, when this came up, it it was the discussion was really around those. Kind of those three alcohol of community events, they. Would that be the intent, so it's not just generally funding.
Yeah, we we would contract, I mean, there are things that are already doing, but we say, we will be doing. You know, hiring.
Yeah.
Hopper machinery.
Yeah.
We would, we would, we'd figure out.
Yeah, so so I I I also, I support staff one in having those discussions, if we say, admit to them to tell us what the amount is, I. I mean, I I I don't know. Yeah, and 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 maybe the way to structure is that it, as others said, I had thought of this, but that it's for multiple years of those events. But. I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
By May, I I wasn't looked at. Eight, it's a one-time. Stipend system. I I. As I stated before, the the events used to be funded by the city, city with. So CBA took that on and have funded it, I don't want it to be here that. Um it's it's to provide them some assistance. I'm not always sure how much. That nets them, but I I know that they would spend expenses of what I just mentioned, and. One of one of the features that should have was the snow, which is, you know, pretty pretty costly, so they might be able to break that.
See, that's my concern to that. Most of their expenses are yearly expenses, they're not permanent. It's not like you're buying the food drive store in the barns brought out the next year, so.
Okay, so we we overall generally have support for it, I want to know if it puts any restrictions on your. Whatever it takes to come back.
We would avoid those spending.
Okay, and then the next item says provides some level of support for downtown. Ryan, that wasn't such a fine item. Uh universal basically income, UBI, five hundred thousand, and the staff is not recommending.
I I, no, I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Agreed.
That's out, I agree. Next is buy down uh the EMR units for eight hundred and fifty, staff is not recommended. Not support.
Yeah.
I have no support, it's too short-term. Okay, the next one is hotels for unhoused during inclement weather for forty-five thousand.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And my, I suppose my question is, is that. How many of the side house? How many nights or how many? Uh I just have some. How much?
Yeah, we had some numbers.
Twenty-one nights at two hundred and twelve or two hundred and eleven.
The cost is based on what Los Gatos spend on their program and it's going. The numbers you see are from Los Gatos program, general.
Okay, so we'll support, we'll support that one. Okay, the next one is hotel voucher program for unhoused at two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I do support it and and I I really. I do support it and I, I really appreciate SAP having the conversations with.
Your support, yes. I would generally support it. Um, of course, you know, it's a limited. Of course, for, I just like to spend like certain time. I send the. Department out in that spot here, here, right here. There used to be a chaplaincy. But there used to be a, a chaplaincy fund that the police department could fall upon to manage perhaps a. So, because sometimes you run it. Have a real problem, um, or you need to spend the night at a hotel and don't have competition. Little problem. Use funds from the chaplaincy. I know that happened, but. Still exists today.
So I think the program referencing, um, wasn't part of the chaplaincy fund. There was, there were vouchers that the county had available for, um. Hotel motels for, uh, for people in need. That program hasn't been in effect for a number of years.
Do no longer have that. Just wanted to ask that question. I'll see if we're somehow. We could support that fund.
Uh, I know what we're going to be talking about, but that hasn't been.
Yeah, very much in support of this, although I, I, I did, I guess, have one question I think of earlier about specifically, uh, when it says.
Hang on, Brian.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I regret to answer this question earlier, but I, I noticed that it said, um. Hotel owners, uh, it says here have offered to work with city. So I just wanted to get a deal if they're like. You know, work with, you know, is it definitive, like truly, or yeah, we'll work with you more casual. But it's very, like, how, how, maybe a hundred percent being yes or for sure, like. Let's, how, how good you want them actually working with us is we have tried to work with them a lot. But that, that results.
True, 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 the last part of the. I can't. You want third point to know everything that's. Someone's mind, I'd say twice now as a follow up. Discussions they've offered collectively to have offered the service.
Thank you.
We know what hotels we're talking about.
Uh, this is motel six.
It's all at motel six.
At this, I, you know, I think we look at the other motels. We know motel six twice again has reached out and said they.
Well, motel six was selected by housekeeper new. Program when you gather new some. I'll tell you, the neighbors love it. We love it because they have twenty four hour security and their needles stop going over the fence and the drug would stop hanging around. So they, the neighbors love that. I only, I do support this program. Those less, uh, fortunate. Okay, um, expansion of the parker grant program. So, Brian, there is currently money that's over and then what we have is, and this is in addition to that.
It's, yeah, there's forty thousand dollars now this week. So would allow for. Not only the one that's in there, but two more in addition to that. For potential.
So if this doesn't go forward, you have time in October to kind of, you're going to put money in something else. Do you want recommendations tonight on where to put?
Uh, that discussion would be helpful once we get through this. Um, we still have a remainder of three hundred and thirty five thousand. So we want to talk about that. And or in addition, come back and up to someone to flush out.
Okay, Elliot.
Yeah, definitely support this and if, if, uh, it isn't taking it.
Well, that's first, do you support it? And then if it doesn't spend it, then we're going to say, let's just.
I support. Yes. Yes.
I just want to mention that I'm, I'm not advocating to expand the park. My, my intention was to be certain that two businesses that have initially. Express an interest during the Tarka program were addressed and, um, adequately. So it's going to close and you're opportun. Ones, um, socially and the others that. That I heard that there was an interest that they wanted. So I'm not supporting expanding it beyond that. I, I want to make sure those two businesses.
All right, and when we originally did the program, we had a total number of partners. We're not expanding that total number. Total number saying, we're just saying these. Issues that had a problem. Also now. Okay, so we have support of that one. Uh, city facility. I want to be sure we, we have a hard deadline on that. Our notification that's new. This is it.
Well, we do it to businesses, uh, over whatever that deadline is. Um, we would give them the same deadline.
I, I just have a question. I, I agree with the spirit of what you're saying and, but, and, and maybe I'm misunderstanding. I don't want to say, hey, these are for the specific businesses. I, I think it needs to be kind of. Open and I think we can say for two businesses. I, I'm just wondering if others agree or disagree and, and, but what you think, I just.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not advocating to expand it to, 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 to say having. Express interest in it. I know that these two business have expressed, one, um, is set to go, but is having some issues. Property rights. And so I want to be sure that. That, that they're addressed. That's all. I'm not trying to be favor, be providing favoritism over one, one business over another.
Yeah, I, I just wonder if it can be. Communicated in a way that, that, that's fair.
Put yourself on the facts. So today, the one partlet. Has been planned, planned checks, current rate of the issue that we come onto, three thousand dollars is reserved. Is sushi confidential? So that's why he has a deadline. But before he and I would be allowed to show. Parklets and additions, those are separate.
And we are not restricting those two to any specific business at this point. We're just saying two more are potential openings.
That's correct.
Okay, so. Moving on to city facilities roof replacement. I'm going to start this one and I'm going to say yes and add AC to this. Our chamber H VAC. So I don't know how much we need up. It goes wrong. How much do we need up to fix the AC? Come on now, actually. Get us, have AC in here.
Uh, I don't have that number off the top of my head to be fully honest with you. I know that, uh, Dave has put a CIP in that we're hoping it's going to be. A busy year that we're in now. Twenty five, was to change. Part of the issue is we've changed the chiller to city hall. So it hasn't been sixty ton chiller. Part of the issue is the controllers that, that operate and. Turn the system on and off and everything. It's an old Allerton setup and they are converting like they did building a. A community center. They would like to, a honeywell system and, uh, controllers. And that's what's in, into C I P project to go ahead. And then we can maintain and actually, uh, critique the system to run better and communicate with it. Uh, adjusting some more. For, so operate.
What did it cost at the community center? Hundred thousand?
Uh, to do the controls, I think it was between eighty and.
Okay, so if we said another hundred and twenty five thousand, okay. Okay, so I support city facilities roof replacement. Because once the roof goes and there's water damage, we can wreck the rest of the building and we need to keep maintaining our roofs for the three seventy five. And then I would add, add a hundred and twenty five for H VAC controls and. Support one of both of those.
I, 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 I would support both in such, so definitely support the seventy five. I would support both conceptually just. When, when staff comes back, just have, obviously have those updated numbers. I, so kind of back of, of. Um, I would maybe call them city hall accessibility.
ADA? That's not ADA.
No, not ADA, but it's.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying.
And I, I support this roof replacement project. I also would. Support some type of. Air conditioning project that I don't want to, I don't want to spot and box him and. Saying it's going to be a hundred and five thousand and it's two hundred. Also, so.
I will have a better, I will have a better figure tomorrow.
I don't care. I don't necessarily need a figure tonight. I'm asking if we support it. I'm giving it a range. To say, Brian, in fact, tell us, give us a firmer number. I'm guessing, you're guessing. Could be two hundred, but we both, so far we have support for H VAC and roofs.
And the roofing too, we're, we're estimating as now we have a kind of. An example to go off of, of the roofings that we've already bid. We got two more buildings, D and H, which are, uh, right about seven thousand square feet. You know, so we're figuring on twenty five and thirty dollars per square foot. So, uh, that's going to put us in a good range and hopefully we'll. Under that seventy five. I can't guarantee that, but.
But part of it.
I did have a. Sorry, I didn't think of that about this earlier, but now that we're kind of cooling and everything, city hall, I, I was thinking about there are different kinds of materials that. Very much else been, been in the building. And has that been a consideration like? Putting the, the roof in and maybe that might be. Or, I don't know, I don't know. But that could be where we save some money and also. For cooling.
You're asking what the energy efficiency of the roof.
Right, and there's also certain materials that can actually come back, like they're not going to absorb. Those groups do.
You're asking the energy efficiency of the roof.
That's something we can look into. They have different types of insulation board that goes underneath that to the area of them. Some has foil, some of them have foil on one side. They do keep. Uh, they kind of reflect the heat off of them. They don't get absorbed into some of the. And what we're doing now too is on a lot of the. Prices we go with, uh, colors, it's more of a whiter color.
That's right.
So it's not absorbing the heat. You don't have that darker color when. Absorbs the heat, uh, with a lighter white color reflects, um.
Great, well, I, I appreciate more details about that.
Some form of energy.
And, and, and of course, the difference in cost, yes.
Yes, I want to make a comment. Um, I would support both of them. Um, I would. For a step further that I, that. So if any. Sort of, or if something doesn't pan out, like the part of money is left on, spent and so on. I would like that money put back into specific city project. Further more example. This is. New equipment, the skate park. It's currently in C I P for federal.
Let's finish this topic.
Well, let me suspend my comment.
Well, we're all, once we're done, we're going to have money to discuss. Okay. Trying to keep.
Right, yeah. And so what I'm saying is, if we had other money left over, I would like to put it back into. Some kinds of fiscal projects that the city has. So for example, the skate park, um, needs modernization of its equipment, but it's not due until. This one year twenty six, we can move that up sooner for, I don't know, the signature. So I just think that. Broad areas.
Do you support the roof replacement?
Okay, last, I have a follow up question. So. Place one of the. Also, uh. As well as.
Close everything, indicating, uh, the cooling ventilation through the building.
The history of this building is that it's hot in the summertime and, and cold in the wintertime. And it seems like the signals don't.
Yeah, and that's what going with that honeywell system could, would help communicate with the piece of equipment outside with our controllers. Uh, to get that. And two, it's been extremely hot and, and it's not an excuse, but this. Building, you know, faces the afternoon sun. So. The AC unit is running. It's all the way down to seventy, but it's, it's playing catch.
And, and I, I understand that, but it, this is not the first time it's.
No, I know it's been ongoing. I, I was dreading coming here tonight. Not, not so much, not so kind of, but I know it's going to be warm.
So on that item, uh, when we, we're going to come back to you shortly. And then make the. Responses to somebody. We'll flush that out and move it.
And then on the official list right now, and then we're going to talk about how to spend the extra money. So Campbell P B A, six hundred and drive at second and, two, six hundred and five thousand.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now I think I need to open it to the public, don't I? So Steve, I see a hand over there waving to one now. Any else wants to make, come on up. Get lined up.
Uh, Steve Saunders, Campbell resident. Uh. Adam. Uh, mayor, lots of members. Uh, I basically support the staff recommendations on. Our fund. Uh, I want to specifically say that replacing the roofs should be very high priority. Also the voucher programs and weird programs and. The. Study for a homeless shelter. Seemed like a pretty important thing to do, given that we have unhoused specialists paid for by a grant, so they're not guaranteed forever. Giving them something to work with seems like a very. Uh, the one thing that I would add or question is with the remaining funds, whether it's two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand. That. No mention of doing something for parks and rec. Here in this place. And I really think, particularly with the pandemic, they seem to take a bigger. Doing something where it's a brand program for, programs for kids or whatever, that should be considered too. Thank you.
Hi, Sophia. Hi, I guess, yeah. So. While you guys were talking about suggestions for this building, I just had thought, um. There are no, maybe there's somewhere else in this building, but the bathroom's right there. There are no changes.
For babies.
Yeah, like if a mom, I'm a mom, but you know, one day if a mom wants to come to this meeting, of course she would. Just, just a secret.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Dan. I'm in the back in the dark back there.
Uh, Ken Johnson, exec board of the Campbell Chamber. Just two comments. One, in regard to G C B A, I support that. Uh, and I like reaching out to them. And, uh, it brings up what I brought up at the last meeting, which is, I think this is an opportunity to really consider looking at. The ordinance around special. If that affects us and them, that may be an opportunity. To give some relief just there. Second thing is in regard to the parklets. Uh, when that program was implemented, we were strong supporting special, but it's for a fixed period. For a number of residents. So I fully support those that were kind of caught up in bureaucracy of it and the journaling. But expanding it beyond those people, uh, affects us because that's more spaces. For example, I can't, at a festival, I can't. Provide artists and businesses that provide revenue. Uh, so I hate to be selfish, but I can't, I'm not able to get it from you now. So. So I'd just say, I would love for it to be for the ones, whoever was involved, we. I think that kind of, kind of, as I was saying, not to expand it, but to take care of the ones who were in it.
Anybody else? And only one other person who hasn't spoke. Oh, okay. All right, now bring it back. So Brian, you have, you back on this list. Okay. So now we have money left over. Right, you have four hundred thousand dollars. Now, Dan.
Well, if we do the chiller.
Okay, we have two hundred thousand. Dan, you had the idea of the skate park.
Yes, uh, and I think that, uh. Well, to the. Solutions. You know.
Other projects earlier?
Dan said, exactly, as he suggests too, that we should definitely put it into projects that, especially ones that are seen like the skate parts of purpose. Example, it's like people utilize it all the time. Something everyone can ski, drive, pass in every. But you know, we want to let our constituency like, hey, look at all the things that we think is funny. So anything you can actually see on work, obviously we bottoming to, to. Make sure our buildings look all, so this ditto with Dan said.
Is there any other specific projects? Is there any other specific projects, things, like these things, you know?
Um, first, I just want to, you know, thank you. Th- this I feel has been one of the best just reports and, and the whole process. I know I've been critical in the past of, of the ARPA process and expressed frustration at times. So I do want to express my appreciation to staff for all the work that's gone to bring us to this point. Um, I, I, I feel like there are times when I, I, I derailed what maybe we, we, we thought the, the budget process, but I really feel that's been collaborative, that there have been great ideas brought up. That there have been ideas brought back. So I, I, I really do just want to express my highest appreciation. Um, for, for, for the work that was brought up. Um, and, and I wanted to prepare this. Uh, it was really a pleasure meeting this and what a great prop to have of, uh, actually having, yeah. That not just, you know, going down the list of things that were suggested, but actually potentially having more. It, it's really fantastic. And so. A, a, in, in my mind, this is, this discussion, these comments now are not just the, you know, two fifty, two seventy five that maybe would be left over, but also if any of these other. Projects don't pan out because some of them are with third parties, if there are funds returned. One, I, I do want to say. Respectfully, I'm not going to accept the, 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 the answer of, oh, we can probably bring it back in time. I want to be really certain if that means pushing deadlines up. Um, I just, I, I, I don't, a- after all the years that we've held on to this funding, um, I just, I don't want to see dollars evaporate at the end of that process. Because of someone not moving quickly enough. And I'm not saying staff not moving quickly enough, but just, I, I, I don't want to leave any potential to gum up the works. And so. Uh, but that means moving up some of these deadlines, communication, whatever, but in all the communication, making sure it's extremely clear. What tho- those deadlines are. Because at, at the, the first, um, notice that some of those funds aren't going to be used, I, you know, let's, let's put them towards other purposes. So that's really. I, I really see this as, as not necessarily figure choosing one or two other things, but really it's prioritizing and then we can go down the list. Um, and, and so, you know, there have been some great ideas brought up by, by colleagues. Um, I really appreciate the, the comments from the public, which, which I, I, I could support. Uh, baby changing stations would be a great one that I'm sure would be impactful for, for a very little amount. Um, I, 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 I will say, and, and it's, it's okay if I'm an outlier on this, but as I expressed previously. My, my interpretation of, of the ARPA funds is my first preference would be to, to really fund more of services that are going to, uh, support impacted communities. Rather than capital projects. And I'm not saying that capital projects just don't support the community. We all benefit and those have long-term. Uh, benefits. Um, but, but that, that just being my interpretation of, of refunds, um, uh, trying to make sure that. We're really maybe funding something that would not ordinarily always get funded in, of course, the things. So. And, and, and that's buried in the spirit of just kind of prioritizing things. And, and again, having said I, I can support what's been suggested, I'm just going to throw out, out other things that, um, have. Maybe not been, one of them which has been discussed, which I'll touch on. Other things which may have not been discussed and, and rather than having a discussion, at least tonight, I would really look again to staff direction. Um, if, yeah, those excess funding. Um, the one, so get like. I follow the staff recommendation. Uh, I, I agree with not moving forward with universal basic income because of the administrative costs. One of the things that I heard discussions with staff and then that we heard just now in the presentation was that. There was not necessarily time for a full discussion with the county or other service providers on specialized programs. Um, putting aside, you guys, it's a very specific thing. I, I'll call it more, uh, specialized programs for some kind of social services for an impacted. And I think we have time to, uh, carry out those discussions and just bring back more information. Um, a- again, I don't have a specific population or program in mind, but I know that there have been programs established by the county for foster youth, for, for other type, for, uh. High schoolers, um, transition, homelessness, all these things. Um, and, and so I would just urge staff to go in and have those discussions with the county. It's, it's, it's not a criticism that we didn't have time for those discussions, but I do just want to fully. Um, play that out and get the information back. So, so that would be the first thing that, that I would want to look at. And obviously we don't have that dollar amount yet, so we don't know. What, what that would be. Other things that, again, if we have excess funds and if we're prioritizing that, I'd ask us to look at would be potentially funding, um, senior or other kind of free meal programs. What I have heard just, um, uh, informally from, uh, nonprofits, churches and other groups that do these kind of services. Is that the, the funding has really dried up. The county has pulled back from a lot of the funding for this. Uh, I, I, I know we ran a very successful senior nutrition program, but it seems like the need for this has, um, maintained or in some cases, but. Social services funding has gone away for those. So those kind of free meal services, especially if it's an existing program, um, I would ask us to look at. And, and then the, the, the other thing that, um, I thought of that I hadn't previously considered. And I, I don't know if this would be possible at all. I'd ask us to, you know, do, do the legal research. I was wondering if it would be possible, given the timeframe that we have, to fund the first one or two years of the unhoused specialists. And renegotiate the contract with Destination Home, the, the, the fund for following years. And whether that would keep us within, uh, the, the, the restrictions that we have for ARPA. I'm not necessarily asking for, for an illegal opinion tonight. It's just something I'd ask us to, to look at. Um, if, if we can then get three or five years of disposition, rather than just the three year grant limited funding. If you're talking, saying that's totally impossible, but you know, but I know we have a friendly partner, Destination Home. So if, if it's possible to explore, I'd just ask us to look at. Those are just kind of the other.
Um, I really wasn't prepared to. Um, specifically identify what, right, Michael, about tonight. I, I feel like the idea of the skate park, uh, another one that comes to mind is the, um. All see the toll. Obviously, it was eighty two, uh, two, uh. Agent infrastructure. So I think that would, that would be. I, I would like to have to. See, I hear that. Or really. Okay.
Uh, so yeah, um, again, I, I, I'm with Dan. I, I wasn't exactly prepared. What do we do with the extra money? So now I'm hearing these discussions. I want to acknowledge, uh. Vice Mayor Lucas, thank you for bringing up the rec services. I hundred percent agree that if we have any, anywhere we could take advantage of already existing programs. We should take advantage of that. We should, I love, uh, like you said, I don't know which ones specifically, but the more direct assistance we could do, which was the intent of. This money in the first place, I would very much encourage that. Um. You know. I also agree, free meal services, yes. If we are, if, if we do have this problem here. People aren't eating, which, you know, every day that goes by, it seems like they're struggling more and more. So I, I'm not surprised to hear that. And that's the thing that breaks my heart. That's one of my main priorities as a human being, but along with Iran. And so I, one hundred percent. Be, we can help with getting meals who are hungry. That's now my number one. Obviously, we can find a place to put that money, maybe so. Get people eating. That's number one. Uh, and then I forgot about this, uh, jog my memory, but, um, uh, you might remember some of those ladies that came in. Months back in there, being awkward, Blood Avenue. And, and they were complaining about cars racing up and down the street, lots of danger there. Uh, my understanding was that these presence got a little bigger, trying to slow people down, but. Uh, there's also the park there, you know, Johnny Morgan Park. Uh, there's the school right nearby. There's a lot of kids and, and, and the elderly. Walking around that area. And I know for a fact it's, you know, in my neighborhood essentially less. And, and it is, it does become a, they, they had a very doubt concern there. So. If we had extra one, uh, we already have this stop sign up there with the flashing lights. It doesn't seem to be too much of anything. Uh, and I know, you know, it's not exactly, you have to have the neighborhood to be to these kinds of. Changes to the roads, but, but essentially I'd like us to see seriously look. Maybe some kind, some kind, something to help with that. So on the traffic. So that would be a very specific project on my list to just see if that's, that's feasible, but it would, so we, yeah, actually. Okay, thank you.
Um, so one question to. I'm not asking for an exhaustive list, but there are some restrictions that we have to spend money on.
Uh, well, certainly there's, uh, complexities over paying staff costs and staff costs. Dr. Unhoused Coordinator, we were just making the staff attract. Those groups and. And this, this, I'm sorry, this calendar. Um, and so there's some limits on that. Uh, there's also limits on sub grants. Uh, so if we're just going to give money to someone. Uh, there's extra recording apartments for us and so there's. How many we can, uh, sort of, sometimes. Um, so those, some of the complexities blocking bigger things, but. I don't think I've heard anything. If not, not even.
So, um. Baby changing stations, but they need. I. My daughter went out with a bunch of guys and it was like, please take in the baby in the bathroom. There's no changing in the mat. So. Both, both men and women get a baby change. Um, I brought the subsidiary, the, um, C I P. He's got our lawn, you know, green, the sitting there Anthony, it's going to be no concerts for another year. It needs repair. The bath boxes are sinking, baths are crooked, bathing sink, sidewalks are. Bond to repair. I would like to see some money while the library is closed, close the. Field or the grass down, do the work while the library is closed. Don't wait. The library is open and then fix the lawn. So I would like to see that and I think pod. Five thousand. So, but I think that, that to me, highly used, it's in Parks and Rec, it does meet the other. Those that are giving it to parks. Then you have a really high quality library open. Fix the sidewalks. Um, I would say, um. The nutrition program, senior meals, I think. Right now it's six week. I do support the skate park. Um, I also would say maybe add some money to the hotel stays for the inclement weather. And also maybe the voucher program for unhoused, and those go to social services. Uh, and help the heavily impacted people. So I would. And I think the D C B A does do a lot of social events in the sense like street pralining, festival lights. Aren't they from the. A car for this weekend. I have to. And I would almost give them a little more money to subsidize. I think that's it. Having a final. Comment to staff. Thank you guys for a lot of work and like Sergio said, of all the guys. To the point, um, Thomas to where we are in this conversation, I think. Sorry, of course. So I do appreciate the staff's effort and together and good things to happen. I'm spending money. Okay. All right, great. Brian, you're. So committee reports. The start.
I have nothing.
I still have to remember now. Come back.
Uh, so I had three events. I went to, I went to the, uh, Association of Bay Area Governments, uh, general, annual general assembly meeting. Um, there was some formal business of various budgets and minutes and things of that nature. Uh, but the afternoon discussion focused a little more frankly on something that doesn't affect us and the family. But, uh. Being aware of something called C D C, which is the San Francisco Bay Commission and, uh. Development, uh, I'm sorry, um. Bay Conservation and Development Commission, which actually regulates, uh, the activities and building of, um, for the San Francisco Bay. And there is new legislation now for all cities who actually border the bay. They're required to. With, um, some plans for how they are going to address the rising sea and, or day levels, uh, because parts of their. Flooded, uh, because of the rising levels. Uh, so all those citizens have to plan, but must be approved by a special committee. So it's kind of neat saying, uh, until we do that. Um, I also attended the final meeting of the, uh, senior belt, um, survey program. Um, and that was a, like, well, we, we had several participants once again. Results of the initial survey and we're going in small groups deciding, um. About some of the potential resources and directions. Sure, for senior program. So. Uh, organized that very well and the staff tonight. At some point in time. General department sort of, sort of tracks all the departments, sort of, turn all the departments for a single possibility. And then finally I. I mean, slowly. Law enforcement torch run, uh, for special Olympics, uh, uh, this past week. It's great. Really support for that program. Also, we did several options from. I have belly joints and, uh. So. We have to get more old guys so that they run slower next year. That's great.
Well, I, I happened to just be out, my chance, and I, I saw Dan in that group run right, but I was like, oh, cool. You know, I had a nice escort from P P and the. Fire, fire station. And then, so that was nice. Um, uh, committees, uh, so the Campbell Historical and Ainsley House Museum Foundation, uh. This I'm really excited about, uh. There's a beer garden. It's going to be, uh, I mean, the plans are in effect, you know, these have been approved, uh. Uh, it's going to be, uh, right next to, uh, it's, it's actually the old Ainsley, uh, office. That brick building right next to the woodbine Pizza and that parking lot. So there's that whole like backyard land area. They're going to turn into a beautiful beer garden. Beer garden. Uh, they're going to have nice little like those fairy lights or whatever, drop lights, you know, so it's going to be nice and well lit at night. They're also, and this was a city requirement, I believe, that they're going to be also lighting that, that alleyway where it's going to be for some. Businesses in the back there, as you sure you're well aware of. Uh, and so they're going to now light that area, make it much more inviting. So that was nice to hear that. Uh, it's going to be family friendly. Uh, they're going to have a, a, a really interesting, uh, family art, artifacts from more recent days, but it's a, a replica of. One of the Ainsley houses, the one that's still on the A campus right now. I don't know. Anyways, they're going to have, it's going to be like a playhouse for the children, but it's like a replica of. Family. So anyways, uh, and they also elected their board members to this specific meeting. So it's a very, uh, good, good meeting. They have a nice. When I joined, ooh, it was very few board members, but, but they have a nice party board now. So there were at least a dozen. So it's real nice to see that. Uh, friends of the Heritage Theater. Good financials reporting. Um, and here's, here's the good news for the city. They, they decided to pay for a repair on one of the, the back. Perhaps I believe it was a shade, something of that nature. So they didn't have to do that, that, that amount of our clients. It was. Many thousands of dollars to have repaired. So I really am glad to hear that they, they decided to pony up that. So less money from our partners. Uh, and also of course the car show. Um, I drove by my sweet rides, didn't enter it, but you know, it was nice to see everyone out there. It looked like it was a really successful. Walked, yes. Uh, I, I had to find a, you know, parking spot very, very far away from all the. Cars in the show, but, but yes, I, I did walk around a bit and it was great seeing all the families out there. Another very successful downtown. Yep, that's what I.
The car show was awesome, by the way.
Uh, you were there too.
Oh, I, I saw every single car.
Yeah.
Um, it was awesome. They had way more cars this year. They did them dyed or like perpendicular like this. Um, they themed them. So there was a block, block had a theme. Uh, they threw in a Ferrari with the nineteen fifty's car and the Lamborghini. The car show was awesome. I was there, spent several hours there. Um, I think you all know my mom passed away. And, uh. She died on Tuesday and Wednesday, the rock garden, my most rock garden had the rock. And I brought my friends and we painted rocks for my car. We didn't put them in the house and they're going to go rock on. So that was so very perfect. Stage. That was great. And of course, I mean. Oh, and I was at the torch run, by the way, I did, and I drove, I started at the beginning. Yay. And I'm driving along and these guys are running and they were last in the line and I. Open my window out, catch up, catch up. And then when they came around the corner here, Brian was first, again, so that's the. So thank you all very much, not bad for technology, yeah.